All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is May 3, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners at 1:00 P.M. We've got quite an agenda today. Commissioner Mudge is out of the office, and so while she is out, I will chair the meeting this afternoon, and I have myself and Commissioner Feeler here, so we do have a quorum. So with that, we will go ahead and get started. Do I have an approval of the agenda? Commissioner Feeler, I don't have any changes to the agenda that was sent out on Friday. Is there anything that you'd need to change on the agenda today?
I know. This looks good to me as posted.
All right. Thank you very much. I will make a motion that we approve the agenda as posted.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion?
None for me.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Wonderful. So with that, we will move on. Community informational items. Commissioner Feeler, do you have any community informational items at this time?
I don't. Not beyond what's on the agenda, and just given us a very full agenda, let's just have us move on.
All right. Sounds good. I, excuse me, sorry. I have just a brief community informational item to share. Last week, I believe it, yes, it was last week, I testified at the Senate hearing for House Bill 1117, which is intended to allow for inclusionary zoning at a local level. Testified that that was an important piece of legislation that needed to be passed to allow us to have the tools that we need to develop public-private partnerships in order to address affordable housing, especially in rural communities. So that went really well. There was a lot of people there that spoke in support of that bill. There was some amendments that were supposed to be introduced on it that increased the density of housing developments or inclusionary zoning developments. When, from the governor's office, if that was a tool that was going to be utilized through a subdivision process on a local level, I don't know the status of those amendments or the support of those at this point, but the original text of the bill I thought was very good. And so did take the opportunity to testify on that. So with that, I don't feel like I have any other community informational items. Commissioner Feeler, do you have any community or commissioner clarifications?
No, just say thanks for taking the time to do that. That is going to be a real, the inclusionary zoning ability is an important tool for us. So, thanks again.
Thanks. Any commissioner clarification, no commissioner clarifications from myself, none from you, Commissioner Feeler?
Nope.
All right. So we will move on at this point to public comments on items not on the agenda. So at this point, if you would like to make a public comment, can you please place your name in the chat or raise your hand on the screen utilizing the reaction button down below? We'll give you three minutes to speak your public comments and go from there. We ask that you keep your public comments respectful and know that it is just a public comment on items not listed on our agenda. Marla Ackridge, you can go ahead and take this opportunity.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody that this Friday, May 7, is our job fair that is virtual with several of our partners presently, and I just looked. We have 28 employers/businesses participating with multiple jobs, and we have 92 people, job seekers, signed up, but continue to promote it. Help us push it out to everyone in the community, and we're excited about this because it's for 18 years and under, 18 years and over, seasonal, part-time, and full-time. So there's a lot of great opportunities, and I know we often hear there's no jobs in Lake County and in Leadville, but there really are. So, thanks.
Thank you, Marla. I sure appreciate it. If anyone needs any guidance or any connectivity to the job fair, please reach out to myself, Commissioner Feeler, or Marla, and we will get you connected so that you can participate in that job fair either as an employer or a job seeker. I think that there's still opportunity for employers to sign up as well. So. Great. Michael Irwin, if you want to mention our spring cleanup and voucher program, that'd be great, and then we'll move on to Colleen Nielsen.
Okay, yeah, we are starting the program on the 15th of May. It is a buy-one-get-one-free, so if you bring a yard of trash to the landfill, up to three yards, we'll give you that same amount free on the next trip, not the same trip, but the next trip. It will, we'll be giving out vouchers until August, the 8th, August the 15th, and then the program will end, we quit taking vouchers on October 17th. So we've got quite a few months that we can still, we'll accept them. But that's what I want to bring up. We're planning on starting that soon and hopefully clean up some of the forest and our yards.
Awesome. Thanks, Michael. Marla, I see a comment in the chat. If you can place the link for the job fair in the chat. And then also, if you could send that to me via email, I'll get it posted on the county website as well and direct people to your website if there's any additional questions. Thank you. All right. So with that, we will, is there any other public comment for items not listed on our agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none, I am going to move into a public health update from our Director of Public Health, Ms. Colleen Nielsen. So, Colleen, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Kayla, so much. And so I just have a few things. We continue to see COVID-19 in our community. We encourage folks that are sick to get tested. We're averaging about 10 cases a week, which is manageable at this point in time. We have not had any cases come back as any of the variants that are out there. We are continuing with vaccination. We have a large vaccination clinic on May 5. Let me see if I can do that. And so if you want to sign up, there is a link to sign up for that clinic. So this Wednesday, we do have a large point of dispensing. It's one of the last ones that we're holding in the community. We have the ability to vaccinate up to 500 folks. We're pretty full, but we still have some spots left if folks are able and interested to get there. As far as vaccination goes, I was able to pull a report from the state today looking at Lake County numbers. We have a total of 2,535 people have been vaccinated with both doses of either Moderna and/or Pfizer and/or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. So when we look at our numbers as far as when people want to know, like, what percentage of our, you know, population has been, you know, fully vaccinated? And what's hard for me to say fully vaccinated is I do not know if someone just got their second shot yesterday. So to be fully vaccinated, you need to be two weeks post either your second shot for Pfizer or Moderna or two weeks post the one shot of Johnson &amp; Johnson. So with that being said, if we were truly at everyone at that two-week mark, we would be about 32% of our population has been vaccinated, if you will. As far as folks that have had second doses, that's 2,405. And I didn't actually crunch the numbers to put that all together, but I can do that right now as far as how many total shots in our community. So that's, that just puts us under 6,000. The report that I pulled does not include anyone we might have vaccinated that has come up. We do know that folks have come up from the metro area and from surrounding counties to receive vaccines. That is not in this report. So when Dr. Zerlinger talks about, like, hey, we've provided, you know, 6,000 something doses, that's from Lake County providers, that's not necessarily all of our community. And so the report I pulled is specific for people whose addresses are in Lake County. So I think we're doing pretty well overall. In the scheme of it all, I'm hoping to see that increase after this large point of dispensing on Wednesday. And so we'll update you guys again in another week. But the other thing that had happened just this past weekend is the governor extended the mask mandate. At this point in time, we have the ability to do our own local public health orders, and we do not necessarily have to follow the state. That is one of the options. And so right now, Lake County is actually stricter than what the governor just issued in the sense that the governor talks about in his new order that if you're in indoor space with 85% of folks being vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask. We are not doing that here in Lake County. If you are inside, you need to have a mask on unless obviously you're eating or drinking. And outside, if you can't maintain, you know, six feet distancing, we ask that you have a mask on as well. So that is a little bit different than what the governor just issued. We are thankful, though, that he did extend the order because I think it's important that people recognize that masking is still one of our best prevention devices that we have out there besides vaccines and the testing and getting folks to quarantine and isolate as appropriate. And so that is where we're at. Any questions?
Thanks, Colleen. Does anybody here with us today have any questions for public health? Please feel free to raise your hand or place a question in the chat. Colleen, we'll just give it a couple minutes and go from there. Colleen, I do, I do actually have a quick question. We'd seen the state doing a few vaccination clinics over the weekend. I would say that that is a signal that vaccines are readily available in the state. Do you have to get a vaccine where you live? I would assume that that would not be the case. So like, if you see a drugstore clinic in Denver and they're offering like a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, you're welcome to do that type of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. So, yes, at this point in time, vaccine is now exceeding the folks that are seeking it out. So there is any opportunity. I will put in the chat as well a link to the state website where all, almost all, I should say, clinics are using this scheduling system. We're using it here, and you can see, you know, and to your point, like Johnson &amp; Johnson, right? A lot of folks are interested in that one dose versus having to do two. And so you can see what they're offering at these different clinics to say, hey, I'm driving through this area, and look, I can do that now, which is great. Like, it's all about convenience, all about, you know, however folks can access it, do it. We are going to be doing some more, what's the right word, some smaller little outreach clinics with some targeted groups that we've already connected with. So we are hoping, like I said, to continue to see that increase in our percent population who are fully vaccinated. So stand by it.
Thanks. So Johnson &amp; Johnson has been removed from, has been unpaused, correct?
Yes. So there was some conversation around side effects, specifically blood clots linked to the Johnson &amp; Johnson. They found that the benefits outweigh the risks, considering millions of people have gotten it. And there's been, you know, eight known cases, I believe it's eight, sorry, if the number went up, of folks that had, it's a very specific type of blood clot that folks had gotten, and they are thinking that it may or not be linked. But in the end, it's up and running again because the benefits outweigh. And I think that's also one of the pieces that I keep hearing folks is that they're experiencing side effects. And the whole thing about side effects is that that's, they're expected. And so, you know, nausea, fever, you know, chills, body aches, that is a normal part of the process of receiving vaccines. Just made your body, your immune system is kicking. I think we have a lot of folks. We do provide information to people and have that conversation with them when they get vaccinated, but I'm finding that some folks are surprised that they're getting side effects. And so we are here to tell you that you should expect side effects, and if you don't, that's fantastic. But if you do, that's actually, you know, part of the process. So you want to make sure that folks are aware of that. And for most people, they disappear in 24 hours. Some people, it's a couple of days more. But in the end, and I know, Kayla, you've shared some stories where we, you know, a couple of days of discomfort are better than 10-plus days of actually having COVID-19 and possibly being hospitalized.
Yeah, definitely. I did have some side effects after my second vaccination. But it, like, literally just stopped, and that was it. So it wasn't like fatigue, had drug on, or like, you know, this, like, when you come out of a sickness and you are still experiencing those symptoms, I guess, if you will, for an extended period of time. It just stopped, and then I was fine. So, I mean, kind of expected to have a little bit of a side effect, I guess, if you will. Like, I just expected it to be kind of like your seasonal flu shot, which it was. So, nothing too terrible. Cool.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think, too, you have to, you know, recognize that some people, you know, feel it a lot more than others. And so I just want to recognize that, you know, that is part of it, and it's not great. But from everything that we're seeing, it's better than having, you know, COVID-19, if you will.
Cool. Well, thanks, Colleen. Commissioner Feeler, do you have anything for Colleen or public health?
Yeah, I had a question related to that is, do you need to get your second shot where you got your first shot? Or can you, you know, so the same question? Okay, so.
Yeah, and so you do not. I mean, that's the beauty of the convenience now, where the key is you have to get the same vaccine that you received the first time. You cannot mix. So as long as it's the same vaccine, you get it wherever you want, as long as it's past the 28 days from your first shot.
Yeah.
Thanks, Colleen. Does anybody, nobody else in the, in the audience has any questions for public health at this time? Okay, as always, if you do have questions, please feel free to connect with Lake County Public Health or any of us county commissioners, and we will put you in contact with Lake County Public Health if you have any questions about COVID, about vaccinations, vaccine access, or the point of dispensing clinics coming up on May 5. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Thanks so much, Colleen. All right. So with that, we're going to move on to new business. First on our list is Build a Generation Bag Amendments to the Memorandum of Understanding. And the desired outcome is a decision on the revised items within the MOU. So this MOU was presented to us by Build a Generation at a works, at our last meeting. They wanted to change the terms, excuse me, of the, of the payments through Lake County Public Health Agency and the county as a fiscal sponsor. I don't feel like I have any questions on this item. It's just a simple administrative change. Legal has reviewed it, and we are pending correspondence back from Build a Generation on the legal revisions. Commissioner Feeler, do you have any questions or concerns on this amendment?
No, I think, and we talked through this on a previous, you know, work session, so I'm pretty comfortable that this is, as you described, and, yeah, as soon as we hear, hear back. I guess the, the decision here would be to approve contention upon resolving those final legal review questions.
Yeah. Chris, if you, if you feel like you need to jump in and clarify that, please do. But I think that legal had sent those revisions over to Build a Generation, and so we're just waiting for that information back from Build a Generation to finalize.
That's correct, Commissioner Marcela, and most of the revisions were just for clarity and context. Nothing substantial to them, so I don't expect it to be a drawn-out process.
Okay. Thank you. So I don't have any further questions. And so with that, I will make a motion that we approve the MOU amendments for Build a Generation pending legal revisions.
A second.
All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner Feeler?
Nope. This sounds good.
Okay. None for me. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. So the next item on our list is a resolution regarding the Crossroads Trail and the City of Aurora and the Upper River Ditch. Let me pull this up here. I don't know that. Do we have anyone from Aurora with us today? Do you know, Commissioner Feeler? I'm sorry, I was out at the end of last week.
Yeah, no, I, I had not heard that anyone was going to participate. I think the agreement's actually, like, fairly straightforward. I don't see anyone.
Katie is on the line. She was working with Commissioner Mudge on that matter.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I can give a summary of the agreement and the resolution if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great, Katie. Thank you.
Sure. So this pertains to the Lake County Open Space Initiative Crossroads Trail, which runs largely across county-owned property, but also would need to run across the Upper River Ditch, which is a water ditch owned by the City of Aurora. And so this agreement licenses the county to build a trail crossing Aurora's ditch.
Okay. All right. Sounds great. Thanks so much, Katie. I do appreciate that. Patty, oh, sorry, did you have anything else?
I was just going to say that the resolution itself approves the license agreement and authorizes Commissioner Mudge to execute it on behalf of the board.
Right. Thank you very much. I'm going to just pull this resolution up. Patty, do you have the resolution number that this would be?
I believe it would be number eight.
Number eight. Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay. So I am going to just share my screen and read this into, into the record here. Can you see my screen? Yeah. Okay. So this will be Resolution 2021-08 of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake State of Colorado, whereas the City of Aurora, Colorado, is the owner of the Upper River Ditch and has an easement that includes the ditch and a right-of-way located in Lake County, Colorado. Lake County desires to obtain, whereas, excuse me, Lake County desires to obtain the permission of Aurora to install a bike and pedestrian recreation trail by the Lake County Open Space Initiative across the ditch located on the property, described and depicted more specifically in Exhibit A to the attached license agreement. Whereas Aurora has agreed to permit the proposed installation of the trail subject to the terms, conditions, covenants, and agreements set forth in the license agreement. Whereas the license agreement will be of mutual benefit and convenience to Aurora and Lake County. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners that Section 1, the Board of County Commissioners hereby makes and adopts the determinations and findings contained in the recital set forth above. Section 2, the Board of County Commissioners hereby finds and determines that the license agreement for the trail will serve a public purpose and is in the interest of the public's health, safety, and welfare. Section 3, the Board of County Commissioners hereby approves the license agreement and authorizes Chairperson Sarah Mudge to execute the license agreement. Section 4, this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption. Adopted this blank day of, should be May 2021. Commissioner Feeler, do you have any further questions on the resolution? Or Katie, is there anything else to add to that resolution?
I have questions. I'm just going to add for folks who haven't, you know, seen the Crossroads Trail before. I mean, it's a pretty cool trail. Just because of our geography, it's, it's hard to get across sort of right-of-way or other properties on a public access trail to get from the east to the west side of the valley. You have to cross, you know, the railroad, Highway 24, you know, and then in some cases, you know, other, you know, in this case, the ditch owned by Aurora. So this trail is actually a pretty important connector to get, you know, to get across. And that links trails coming up from the south and the east side, you know, across to some of the county roads and other public access on the west side. So again, it's a pretty cool connector that La Cosey's been working on, you know, hard to make. This is sort of one piece of that puzzle.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much for sharing that context. I do appreciate it. I don't believe that there is anybody from Aurora or La Cosey with us today to add anything. So with that, I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2021-08.
A second.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Feeler?
No, all good for me.
All right. Same. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to number three, which is the Anderson Hollis Architects' Proposal for Additional Services to Provide Space Needs Identification Services to Lake County to Support the City of Leadville's Consideration of Participation in the Lake County Justice Center project. Katie, do you have information on this from Anderson Hollis? All right. I'm going to let you give us some clarification on the city's participation then.
Sure. So just to give some context, this, this basically represents an amendment to the scope and fee of an existing contract with Anderson Hollis to conduct a space needs assessment, which is, which is really just what it sounds like. It's, you know, Anderson, the architects trying to understand the square footage and layout needs of the occupants of the Justice Center. In recent months, the City of Leadville expressed an interest in having the Leadville Police Station also be located, co-located in the Justice Center. And to that end, Anderson Hollis put together a proposal to conduct a space needs assessment specifically for that police department. Last week, we presented, the mayor presented this proposal in a work session to city council. They were unanimously supportive of reimbursing the county for this fee. The fee is $4,653.50 to do this work, which basically amounts to interviewing the police and related stakeholders to understand staffing and also staffing projections, looking at other data they provide, and putting together a report essentially that describes the amount of space a police station might need in the Justice Center. The city has, has expressed that they would like this space to be considered as, you know, in close cooperation with the sheriff. In other words, not, not necessarily its own standalone entity. And I think that that, that's intended to promote better cooperation and also cost-saving. And part of the proposal, so that's the space needs part of the proposal. Another part of this proposal, which has no cost attached to it, but does expand the scope slightly of the existing contract with Anderson Hollis, is a jail safety upgrades plan. And so that, which we've discussed a little bit in the task force meetings, the purpose of that work will be to come up with very specific targeted improvements to the existing jail for the limited purpose of detaining a small number of people for a short period of time, which would overcome the, you know, quite far away, the cost and inconvenience of that. Anderson Hollis is including that work at no additional cost as part of their backfill plan for the existing courthouse building. They are prepared to begin work next week. They have provided me with dates when they would be interested in coming to the courthouse to fulfill that portion of the project as well. So that was kind of a lot of information, but do you have any questions?
I don't believe that I have any questions at this time.
Oh, I could just add, I was on the city work session as well, just listening in, and, yeah, that I think it was well-received, and I'll just sort of comment that I think is there a reasonable fee for that additional design work? And I think both, you know, the city police, you know, is kind of bursting at the seams a little bit from their current space, and they've been looking at space. So I think, you know, both the, the perspective of, you know, finding them adequate space and the greater, you know, integration, collaboration with the county sheriff's office, you know, it certainly makes sense to, to do this work, to see what that would take to include it in the Justice Center plans. So.
Okay. I don't think that I have any, any further questions either. Katie, we would just need to, would we need to, after, if this was approved, would we need to develop an IGA or MOU for how the payments would be handled with Anderson Hollis or whatever that would look like?
Well, it's a good question. I think what we envisioned is that the county would continue to be Anderson Hollis's client. That was their preference, just for the, you know, ease of handling this, but that the city would be invoiced for this. but that the city would be invoiced for this work. If the project goes forward to include the Justice Center, I think we'll have to have a more in-depth conversation with the city about what that cost-sharing would look like. But in this case, since it's a fixed fee and it's a relatively low amount, I think the county would proceed as the client and then just relay the cost, pass on the costs to the city through an invoice. I'm not sure if any other similar arrangements exist. But it could be as simple as that, I think.
Okay. That would be my only question at this point. So I don't feel like I need any kind of additional clarification. So with that, I will make a motion that we approve the Anderson Hollis Architects' Proposal for Additional Services to Provide Space Needs Identification Services to Lake County to Support the City of Leadville's Consideration in Participating in the Lake County Justice Center Project.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner Fiedler?
No, this is good. I'll just add, I think from my perspective, it doesn't seem like an IGA is necessary because it's really just, I think it would just be a one-time payment, not some sort of like ongoing relationship at this point. So
Okay.
Just a simple invoice should work.
Yeah, I think we'll just want to reach out to the finance department to make sure that we capture that cost as being passed on to the city logistically, so. All right, seeing no further questions at this point or discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Fiedler. So with that, we're going to move on to number four, which is the Leadville Race Series 2021 Events Permits. I'm going to hand it over at this point to Anne Schneider from Building and Land Use, who has been in receipt of the event permits for the Leadville Race Series. So if you would like to walk us through the applications that you've received and the recommendations that you've received from the referral agencies and Building and Land Use for Special Event Permits, that'd be great.
Thanks, Kayla. Yes, so we received the Leadville Race Series 2021 Special Event Permit and have facilitated all of the Lake County Review Agencies' input and recommendations for any potential approvals of those events. The applications that we've received have been the Camp of Champions, which is the training camp. The run is June 25th through June 27th, the bike being July 1 through July 4th, the Leadville Marathon and Heavy Half, which is a full and half marathon, June 19th, utilizing the east side mining district, utilizing old mining roads and trails topping out at Mosquito Pass. And then, of course, the 100-mile Bike Race, set for August 14th through 15th, and the 100 Run, August 21st through 22nd, the Silver Rush 50-mile mountain bike and trail run, July 10th through 11th, a Dutch Henry. And then finally, the Stage Race, which is a three-day mountain bike race utilizing the 100-mile Bike Race Course. And that is set for July 30th through August 1st. Those are the applications that we have received. And we also have today present the event coordinators, Tim and Rich, who can answer any questions for the board that you may have. After facilitating responses and in dialogue with the review agencies, we have the following recommendations for any potential approvals. And I'm going to go ahead and list them all. And then we have made them specific within each special event recommendation as to which events that they apply to. So you do have, staff did provide a recommendation for each of the events that I went through. And this is an inclusive list of all of the considerations that the review agencies have asked for. So number one is approval would be contingent upon continued participation in IPA preparation facilitated by Lake County Office of Emergency Management along with other identified stakeholders. Haley Hamm has been gracious enough to offer to continue to do the amazing coordination and preparation that goes into aligning with the event and all of these different applications and creating a very great prepared plan for the community. So that's an essential recommendation. Two, the applicant shall furnish the protocols and methods by which the event is discouraging spectators, and they will submit those to Building and Land Use within 15 days of any approval. Number three, the applicant shall update the medical portion of the operational plan to include current contacts. We just noticed that going through some of the operational plans, we've had a changeover in some of those medical contacts. And so we just wanted to bring attention to that and make sure that those plans are updated accordingly. Number four, the applicant shall contact, contract, excuse me, with St. Vincent's General Hospital Emergency Services for any services required during the event. I believe that dialogue has already begun. I sent that out to the event, and I think they've already started to work into those contractual situations. Number five, due to the time of year, Lake County will be in an anticipated high wildfire danger. All generator locations will need a five-pound dry chemical fire extinguisher. That, of course, is from Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue. Number six, all tents and canopies will need to be weighted down for potential high winds, again, from the fire department. Number seven, approval is strictly contingent upon approval by public and environment health of any food or beverage distribution, as well as any food vendors. Some of those still remain a little bit unknown at this time. And so prior to actually implementing them or going into contractual relation situation with food vendors, they must go through public and environmental health to be approved. And those dialogues, I believe, are already happening as well. Parking, any parking associated with any of the events must be a minimum of a foot off of any county right-of-way to ensure emergency egress. That was brought forth by Public Works. Signage shall be present for all events. Again, Public Works requirement. The event shall not place porta-potties at the courthouse as depicted due to safety concerns. Event shall relocate to an acceptable location approved by Lake County Public Health. I think that's been an ongoing conversation. And I think that the event is aware of it and is looking for ways to remedy it. Number 12, all 2021 Special Event Permits are subject to potential changes in local public health orders associated with an increase in the spread of COVID-19 within the Leadville Lake County community. This may result in required postponements or event cancellations. This is present in all 2021 approvals or consideration for approvals of special events this year. Thirteen, the applicant shall abide by the operational plan submitted along with any outcomes from continued facilitation with the Lake County Office of Emergency Management to ensure the safety of our community and the event. And number 14, the approval is strictly contingent upon all submitted application documents. Within the application itself, there is a lot of other hoops that these applicants need to jump through, including other for-service permits, BLM. I know those are all, they're engaged in all of those conversations. And so everything that they have included within their application become conditions of approval. And so that is what we have for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions that we can or refer to the applicant if there are questions that are beyond our knowledge or we think they might be a little bit better answering.
Thanks, Anne. My only question would be around that porta-potty need and not having that at Lake County Courthouse. Tim, have you had those conversations with public health or is that still in the works to nail down a location for those?
It's still in the works to nail down a location. What we had submitted was similar to what we've done in the past. But Rich and I had actually talked through that this morning. I think we came up with a good solution that everybody should be able to agree on.
My, and then the only other question that I had with discouraging spectators, is that information that you will send out to participants to discourage that kind of like gathering or not having spectators at aid stations or at the start and finish line? Or how is that going to work?
It's gonna be a multi-pronged approach, obviously. We'll utilize our website, social media channels, athlete emails, anybody that is registered for the event, also any volunteers that are signed up for the event. What we are going to do is try to manage it as much as possible. We're gonna discourage a lot of people from exactly what you had just said, trying to get to the course, to the aid stations. This year, more than any year, we're kind of trying to tell the athlete they have to rely on themselves, to be self-supported, rely on the aid stations and all the support that the race series does give to the athletes on course and not rely on your in-laws or your significant other, family, or friends to be out there. And then at the start and finish lines, we're gonna, you know, encourage people to not be gathering. We have some plans in place that we can keep people spread out. We'll encourage them to kind of, you know, finish their event, you know, drain the lactic acid out of their legs and then safely be able to either drive home or walk home. But yeah, the main goal is to kind of do what everybody's doing these days and eliminate any kind of gatherings. We are, like Colleen had mentioned at the very beginning of this, we will be mandated masks at the start and finish lines and anywhere that people cannot be socially distanced. And on top of that, we'll probably utilize some of the overhead boards, too, coming into town on both the north and south end, just to let people know that there is an event going on and to maybe even try to either avoid those areas or kind of pre-plan an area where you can meet your athlete afterwards.
Thank you. I don't feel like I have any additional questions at this time. Commissioner Fiedler, do you have any additional questions?
Yeah, maybe just, I appreciate that. And that was sort of the direction most of my questions were. I was curious, do you anticipate having sort of extra staff? Or will your staff even have the authority to sort of ask or require spectators to kind of disperse? Maybe you could talk me through like what's, you know, both legally and practically possible there?
So, yeah, it's tough to enforce it without having law enforcement on the site doing so itself. There's a few ways that we can enforce it internally. One of those that we've already posted on our website is disqualification. So if somebody isn't abiding by the mask mandate or, you know, they bring 12 family members along and they're just not listening to us when we ask them to either split up or take their group, you know, to an opposite corner or somewhere where they can be by themselves. Disqualification is a real thing, you know, and athletes do take that pretty seriously because it's like the last thing they want is to see it on their name. So as far as that goes, that's about all the enforcement we can do. Obviously, we'll have plenty of signage. We'll use our emcee, our announcer, to actually encourage people to either move along or spread out and just to kind of, you know, be good citizens, good people. I think that's kind of all we can do when it comes to like boots on the ground, utilizing volunteers also in our staff to just kind of echo what the emcee is saying, too.
And then will your, in terms of protecting your volunteers and staff, I think you, if I heard right, you said, I mean, you'll still at that point be having staff masked up and sort of protecting themselves. Do you, I'm not saying this as a requirement. I'm just sort of curious, are you requiring staff to be vaccinated?
We're not requiring staff to be vaccinated. We actually looked into that a little bit. And there's some other event companies that are doing that, and some of them have hit a pretty big hurdle with HIPAA. So it's one of those things that's kind of hard to do. I can tell you right now, like most of our staff, if not, I think every one of our staff members is, but I don't know about all of our volunteers. But there are going to be ways operationally where we will try and minimize any unneeded contact, I guess you could say, of family and friends of the athletes and volunteers. For a packet pickup, for instance, you know, it used to be anybody could just walk into the tent, get their registration and everything with their athlete. Now it's just the athlete only. And there's a number of items like that, similar to our finish line. Finish line, you used to be able to run in with your family or friends. That will no longer be the case. It'll only be athletes, staff, and medical volunteers in the finish. You're just trying to eliminate all the unnecessary kind of touch points possible.
Yeah. And are you doing anything in terms of, or even on a contingency basis, or any of the races limiting actual athlete participation or doing wave starts or anything like that to kind of spread out that clumping? I mean, my sense is like, once people are out on the course, it starts to get pretty spread out, at least once you're, like, once you're 10 miles in or something. But yeah.
We are, right off the bat this year, before we really dove into our operations plans, we did cut, or cap, I should say, our athlete numbers by about 40% or more, depending on the event. So we do have significantly less athletes for each race itself. And we will be utilizing wave starts to just, yeah, kind of thin the herd out from the beginning. That'll help just as the course goes on, as the race goes on itself. It'll alleviate some of that congestion you see at the aid stations on course, the turnaround points, the porta-potties. Yeah, wave starts will be necessary.
Okay. I think that was all the questions I had. So yeah, thanks for thinking this all through. And yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tim. I don't think that I have any other questions either at this point. Anne, is there anything else that we should know while taking this into consideration or anything that's important for us to keep in mind?
No, I really think that Tim has kind of highlighted a few things. You know, just so the board knows, we vetted this through our normal kind of 2021 process. We did our initial meeting with the Office of Emergency Management and Public Health and the applicant to just go through their operational plan and aid stations and, you know, just kind of all of the things that Tim talked about, the wave starts, the way that they're keeping them in pods to ensure distancing, that, you know, this is a year focusing on the athlete and not a robust spectator crew or entourage of people supporting the athlete. And so I think that we applauded the work that he put into and the thoughtfulness that the race series has put into their operational plan to ensure some good practices around safety and COVID. So I just, that was our first step before we even took it out to the review agencies to make sure that Public Health and the Office of Emergency Management felt as though those preliminary discussions were where they needed to be. And then, of course, we will be doing a lot of follow-up with the EOC and other identified stakeholders as we go through the next few months with the race series.
I don't feel like I have anything else at this time. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Fiedler?
No, I think I'm all good.
All right. Well, with that, I will make a motion at this point to approve the Leadville Race Series 2021 Event Permits.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner Fiedler?
Maybe just to reiterate that, you know, the approval is contingent on the conditions in the applications as submitted. So, yeah.
All right. I have no further discussion either. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Anne. Thank you, Tim and Rich, for being here with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to number five, which is a Mineral Belt Trail Committee request. And this is a request to support the Mineral Belt Trail Application for Climax Grant Funding. And we have Howard Tritts here with us today to talk us through the grant request. So Howard, I'm gonna turn it over to you if you'd like to talk us through that grant request for the Mineral Belt Trail.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. All right. Well, first off, thanks a lot for letting us be here today to present this. I did send you twenty-two a copy through the email, plus I delivered to your offices last week. last week, a hard copy. But I think the best thing to do for the public is just to read the letter, and I'll read it pretty quickly. "Dear Lake County Board of County Commissioners, Members of the Mineral Belt Trail Committee wish to inform you of a potential safety hazard on the Mineral Belt Trail and request your permission to initiate the process to alleviate the problem. The area in question is between mile markers five and six on the south side of Iron Hill along steep grade that ends at County Road Two in California Gulch. This is the same area where the Colorado Department of Mine Reclamation recently built an under-the-pavement steel bridge to span a mine stope that was slowly opening. This trail section is steep, allowing for high-speed descents and extremely narrow. The lack of an adequate shoulder not only poses a threat to user safety, but is causing damage to the paved lane on the downhill side of the trail. The Mineral Belt Trail Committee believes a cribbing wall along the length of the narrow section will allow for the establishment of a shoulder, prevent people from going over the edge, and protect the pavement from crumbling. We are asking for permission from the Lake County Board of County Commissioners for the committee to apply for a Freeport-McMoran Site Investment Grant. This grant, if awarded, will help pay for qualified individual to analyze the area, determine the scope of work, and provide a cost estimate to remedy the situation. The Site Investment Grant will not exceed $10,000. If the grant is awarded, any additional funds necessary to complete this assessment will come from the Mineral Belt Trail account. Your proper response to this request will allow the committee to meet the grooming the upcoming grant application deadlines. The deadline for applying for the June 2021 grant is May 10, 2021. The deadline for the September 2021 grant is August 10, 2021. Sincerely." I think that pretty well covers the situation. I did want to bring up the fact that when we built the trail years ago, we realized that this was a safety hazard, and we also knew because of the steepness, it would be causing pavement problems. And so we had, through the grant monies that we had received, we purchased the materials to provide a cribbing the whole length to protect the trail and protect the riders. Unfortunately, that never got done by the time the trail opened up. We had a grand opening in 2020. And I, no, I don't know what happened to the materials. They disappeared, used somewhere else. They were stored in the county lot, but regardless, they're gone. So we have to start from scratch. Another thing is, if we do get this grant and we go find out that we, what the cost, and then we can go to other people to provide money such as the mining companies that are involved in the trail right now, Newmont, and as well as Climax Molybdenum would give, probably look at a grant to help in this endeavor. So we're asking you to at least give us a chance to get it scoped.
All right, thanks, Howard. I don't feel like I have any questions at this point. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any questions?
I just had one, Howard. In the letter, it says that if the scoping work, the engineering work is more than 10,000, the balance would come potentially from the Mineral Belt Trail account. I was just curious if you had any sense of what the cost might be? I mean, is 10,000 like a reasonable ballpark, or could it be a lot more?
You know, that is a hard, tough question. It's hard to tell. I would, from other estimates that I've seen in other jobs through my years at Climax, of course, that was a long time ago, and then again, being the assessor. I think it'd be somewhere between 10 and 15,000.
Okay, so.
Somewhere in that area.
But not like 100,000?
No, no. We wouldn't know if it was.
Yeah, no, I think that's the only question I had. I mean, that, yeah, having biked down that section with kids, that seems like a good one to take a look at.
Another, another point to bring up is I have talked with Michael Irwin, and he has agreed to, in the interim, put up a sign at the head of the trail before you start to descend, one of those highway signs that has an icon, a picture of, you know, look out, there's a drop-off, be careful, something like that, to try to protect people from having an accident there.
Okay. Thank you, Howard. I do appreciate your time with us today. I think that would be a great idea to put that signage up. I don't know that I have any additional questions for you at this time. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, I'm all set.
All right. So with that, I will make a motion that we support the Mineral Belt Trail application for Climax funding.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, Commissioner Feeder?
No, I think that was good.
All right, I don't have anything either. So with that, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right. Thank you, Howard, for being with us today.
Thank you so much. We very much appreciate your help.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for coming to us with that, and thank you for being solution-oriented to make sure that.
I have one technical question.
Sure.
I see my mug's on the picture here all the time. If I hit stop video, will that shut everything down or just me?
Just you, it'll just turn your video off.
Okay, that's what I'll do. Thanks again.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks, Howard. Okay, so with that, we will move on to number six, which is an intergovernmental improvement agreement, an IDA, between Parkville Water District and Lake County. Michael Irwin, I believe that you might have some background on this for us if you want to talk through this request from Parkville Water.
So this has to do with the excavation permits that we require when they dig up our roads. In the resolution, it allows for a letter of a letter in lieu of bond, and we've taken that to an MOU now. And Chris knows a lot more of that because she wrote the MOU, I believe, and she could probably help better. But that's basically what it's for, is to let them dig and because they're not going anywhere, they're going to fix our roads, and they promised to fix our roads.
Yeah, this is Chris. Thanks, Michael. I was just going to chime in. The original letter that was proposed was woefully short on details, and so this is just to make sure that the county's protected and that Parkville will be obligated to do what they've told Michael they're going to do. So, but at this point in time, we weren't able to get all of the final draft, the revisions and stuff, done in time for today's meeting. So my request would be for the commissioners to approve it pending final legal review and revision.
I don't believe that I have any questions on this at this time. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, none for me.
Okay. So with that, I will make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental improvement agreement between Parkville Water and Lake County Government.
Second.
All right, any further discussion, Commissioner Feeder?
No, none. Just again, to reiterate Chris's comment that, you know, pending just the final legal review of that.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry. Can you please amend my, amend my, amend my motion, Patty, to include pending legal review on the end of that? I'm sorry. Any further discussion on that, Commissioner Feeder?
All good.
All right. With that, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to number seven, Cloud City Conservation Center, C4 request. Commissioner Feeder, I believe that you have some information on this request from C4?
Yeah, so this is basically just the BSCC approving C, well, I actually, this is an application for up to $10,000 of grant funding from the upper Arkansas council governments. They do these micro grants for a number of purposes, but including planning. The work would be to update, C4 did already 10 years ago somehow an energy plan for the county, bringing together a wide range of stakeholders. 10 years is a long, a lot of changes have happened, and they want to do sort of, you know, brief update and refresh of that plan. I think this would be, you know, that work would be supportive of some of the other transit-related work that's going on, including some work between the county and city. Commissioner Marcello, that you're leading with the mayor. So, you know, I think it would be a good, a good thing and take advantage of that grant funding. It does, just because of the nature of the grant, the application would, has been prepared by C4, but would go into the upper Arkansas cog on, under our name as the county, and there is a cost share requirement that potentially could be as much as $5,000 if we get the full grant. So the desired outcome decision is to approve the county submitting this application, and if we are successful with the grant, providing the necessary cost share.
Okay. I don't believe that I have any questions on the, on the request for support or application at this point. Thank you for giving me that or for giving all of us that brief outline. Any further discussion, Commissioner Feeder?
No, I think that's it. Again, just to say that I think this is, you know, good to have kind of that refreshing of that previous plan to see, you know, what steps in that 10-year-old plan are underway, what's, you know, and some pretty big things have changed. I think it'll be supportive to have that framework for, you know, some other efforts going on. There's potentially a new transportation funding legislation and state legislature this year, so I think it'd just be good to have that refreshed, you know, as that goes through. Oh, and also, you know, there's a transit focus in some of the ARP funding coming from the COVID recovery funding from the federal government and passed through to the state. So again, I just think it'd be good to have, you know, some updating of that energy and transportation plan in place.
Cool. Thanks, Commissioner Feeder. I don't have any further discussion or questions. And so with that, I will make a motion that we support the request from Cloud City Conservation Center for their application and potential grant match to the upper Arkansas Council of Governments.
Second.
All right. I don't have any further discussion, any from you, Commissioner Feeder?
No, thanks for putting this on the agenda.
All right, thank you so much. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right, thank you very much. Number eight, cost allocation plan agreement. This is a decision for the finance department. We have to do a cost allocation plan every fiscal year for Department of Human Services to get reimbursement from the state from HIPAA. So Crystal, if you'd like to walk us through this agreement request for us, for our consideration, that'd be great.
Okay. It is an annual agreement with Ken Jones, who's an end-to-end contractor. He has been completing the cost allocation plan for Lake County for numerous years. I did reach out to Ken to get a bid for his services. I did receive a bid from another contractor as well that come in considerably higher. Ken does have a working background with the county and is very familiar with our general ledger and the ins and outs of everything. This is pretty standard from prior years. I don't know if you want me to read through the contract or just give you a highlight of what it is for.
Yeah, if you just want to provide us with a highlight, I think that'd be great.
Okay. So the amount of the contract is for $3,700. As Commissioner Marcello mentioned, it is for the cost allocation plan, which provides the cost of administrative and supportive expenditures that are allowable for reimbursement for, through the Department of Human Services. In order to qualify for those reimbursements, a cost allocation plan must be completed and file every year by June 30. And I think that's about it. That sums it up.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do know from working with Ken in the past that his work is good work. And so I appreciate you being diligent and getting bids from other contractors as well while this time period kind of crossed that approval of new financial or procurement policy. So thank you for doing your due diligence there as well, Crystal. Commissioner Feeder, do you have any questions?
No, that all seems good.
All right. So I will make a motion that we approve the cost allocation plan agreement with Ken Jones.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion, Commissioner Feeder?
No, that sounds clear.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Well, thank you for doing that work, Crystal. All those in favor? I?
I.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so now we will move on to item number nine, the resignation of the Lake County Coroner. On Friday, April 30th, I'm sorry, let's see here, on Friday, April 30th, the Lake County Board of County Commissioners was made aware of the resignation of Lake County Coroner Shannon Kent. Mr. Kent's resignation will be effective on August 1st or until an incumbent is seated in that position. At this time, the Board of County Commissioners would like to formally recognize that resignation from the Lake County Coroner and invite anyone that feels that they can fill that vacancy to submit their letters of interest to the Board of County Commissioners. You can email those board, those letters of interest to hr@co.lake.co.us. Chris or Jeff, do you have anything to add to that conversation?
This is Chris. I was just going to, for point of clarity, the, what the commissioners, I think, are asking for, letters of interest for an interim appointment to fill the coroner's spot until an election can be held to fill the position as required under statute. So the letters of interest would be just for an interim appointment at this point in time, and that, it's my understanding that the coroner's resignation was, you know, effective either, I guess, the earlier of August 1st or when an interim appointment is made. So that's, I think, what the plan would be.
Chris, can I ask a clarifying question there? I had understood that the appointed, you know, replacement coroner would serve out the term. Chris, can I ask a clarifying question there? I had understood that the, um, appointed, you know, replacement coroner would serve out the term, you know, until the next sort of scheduled regular election. Is that on?
Yeah, I, I'll have to check on that, but it was, it was my understanding that the elects, because of the resignation, that, that the election, an election to replace him would need to be scheduled.
Oh, okay, okay.
They, um, this is Patty in the clerk's office.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe that he would, the new person would be, would take an office until the next election, which would be 2022 in November. That would be the end of, of Shannon's term.
Okay. So the, the appointment made would, would.
Would be for about 19 months.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check, I'll check to confirm that, um, to make sure, just so that for folks who may be interested will know exactly what term that they're asking to sign up for.
Thanks, Chris. Um, so anyone?
Well, so Commissioner, I was just gonna, you know, I, I, sorry if you said this, but I think, you know, to, to, to me, an important point to note, you know, just for the community is that with the current coroner, you know, giving the, you know, 90-day, um, effective day, you know, both, but, but the coroner and appointed deputies, you know, stay in service. So, you know, we, 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 we continue to have coverage of coroner duties. Um, you know, through, through that time. So, you know, there's no, there's no concern about gap in, in service here.
Thanks for, thank you for that clarification. I do appreciate it. All right. So with that, we will move on to reports, minutes, bills, and payroll. Um, we have bills and payroll for pay period ending April 23rd. I will make a motion that we approve the bills and payroll for pay period ending April 23rd, 2021.
I will second that motion.
All right. Uh, any further discussion?
Uh, none for me.
All right. Um, none for me either. So with that, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right. Wonderful. Um, next we have minutes for the BSCC regular meeting, April 19th, February 11th, and March 9th. Um, and I apologize, Commissioner Feeder, but I had not had an opportunity to go through those. Um, I had seen that Commissioner Mudge had made some, um, edits on there, but I had not had an opportunity to read those. And so if it's appropriate, I would ask that we table those until our May 17th meeting.
Yeah, that's fine with me. And I think, yeah, or maybe if, if we have a, a special meeting for other matters before then, we could maybe slip it into that agenda just to sort of not get too, too backlogged. But yeah, I think, I think that delay is fine.
Great. Thank you. Um, I'm hoping, I'm, we may have, um, a few items that we may need to consider before May 17th, um, that I'm working through with Legal Now. So potentially, um, let me see here quickly. If we could schedule something, maybe next Monday or Monday afternoon, just briefly, quickly, um, and add those on there, that'd be great. So, uh, if we could just, I'll just send us a calendar invite to block some time off. Um, but finishing up some, some contracting documents and scope of work for transit feasibility. So, um, that's on my to-do list.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda today. Um, and we will adjourn this afternoon at 2:17 PM. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.